Terely.
Okay.
I know we've already heard this.
Huh?
Oh, same.
That was gonna go.
This is Terry.
Over to you.
Oh, man.
Oh, he's on.
We're planning on.
Are you?
Well, we're planning on.
I want to be there.
I'm not clear, please.
Yeah.
How you doing?
I'm good.
All of you good?
All of you good?
Well, this is my group.
This is Terry.
I'm on my best life.
Over to you.
Oh, man.
Get no offense to that.
Yeah.
To release just the shit.
Shouldn't it just grow big?
How would you manage?
I would.
Yeah.
I want to be there.
I know Claire, please.
Yeah.
How you doing?
I'm good.
All of you good?
All of you good?
Well, this is Terry.
I want to make sure.
I want to be there.
I know Claire, please.
Yeah.
How you doing?
Oh, he's on.
We're planning on.
Are you?
Are you ready?
No.
Well, we're planning on.
It's great.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Yes.
Yes.
Evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, city attorney position.
Before you go into executives, these are actually, I think, left over from the previous agenda. I don't actually have anything prepared for any legal matters, so I'm happy to go into executive office with you to discuss.
Yes, please.
Okay.
At this time, we'll recess into executive session and dinner 13, 10, 13. I will make discussion of possible action on accepting the resignation of Mayor B C D.
Make motion to accept the presentation of Mayor's opinion.
I have a motion about a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second, Scott. Missy.
Yes.
Roger. Yes. I will be discussion of possible action on filling the vacancy of Mayor by appointment of the City Council. So due to us not having, being able to have a meeting on Tuesday, or a special meeting on Friday, eight days has passed for both B C's and David Williams' resignations. So at this point in time, we'll have to call a special election.
Was this one of those no action meetings again?
Yes.
Or is this, or is this something that we can discuss?
That we can discuss.
You can discuss it, yeah.
So we've been told at midnight this morning that it was, um, it's not time stamped. So it doesn't go from the minute that they resign to the exact time on the eighth day. So at midnight, we came out. And we were under the impression that it was going to be time stamped till this afternoon, but it was October sixth. So we were gonna have enough time to take care of all of it, but we've been informed that's not the case. And C N L has also been a part of that, so.
So what do you want for B, my no action? Make a motion to take no action on I M B.
I mean, we have a special request, I can actually wait, 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 I get her, I agree.
What do we need to do in court?
Okay, some council advice, um, as I just explained, because that resignation became effective while they had the authority, you know, to make a decision, you have to call a special election, but they won't permit it until you're. Um, so because of that, then you cannot fill the vacancy of Mayor.
I know, what do I need to do, the I of the G, so you move on?
No action.
No. All right, make motion to take no action on I M B.
Second. I have a motion in a second to take no action.
All right.
That's egregious. And I'm going to have to table all of them.
Missy, I would have any further discussion? Scott.
Aye.
Missy.
Roger.
I will see discussion of possible action on filling the vacancies of a council member by appointment of the City Council, since we do not currently have a vacancy. Does that council member would move to Mayor, potentially, uh, make a motion for no action?
Second.
I have a motion in a second for no action on I M S, Scott.
Aye.
Yes.
Roger.
Aye.
Aye, passage unanimously. I will be discussion of possible action on accepting the resignation of Council Member David Williams.
Make motion to accept resignation of, uh, Council Member David Williams.
I'll second.
I got a motion in a second, is there any further discussion?
Uh, does Council want to read his letter of resignation to the record as we do with mayors?
No.
True. That's D.
Yes, I will be.
June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. When I decided to run for office, I knew of many concerns, controversies, and challenges the city faced. The most familiar to me include the mass accidents of city staff resulting in city offices being temporarily closed, and the immediate need to fill these positions. Unanswered, uh, second, uh, bullet I, unanswered questions regarding how city business was conducted and how it was being communicated to the public, the arrest of a city council member who actually was not even eligible to hold office in the first place, and the potential legal ramifications that their participation had created. Several official complaints against current and former city staff, including multiple against a city city council member that resulted in a yet-to-be-concluded independent investigation. Skepticism towards the general law firm hired to represent the city. Persistent terror attacks against the mayor and his authority granted by law, uh, state law, excuse me. And a local partisan group led by a few local resident and non-resident pro-op crewers. During the weeks leading up to the election on May sixth, every candidate that communicated, oops, every candidate that communicated publicly spoke or wrote about, quote, "moving forward, working together, following laws and policies, transparency, and resolving conflict," end quote, at some point. In addition, the hiring of a full-time city administrator and city secretary appeared to be the universal high priority tasks that all candidates could agree upon and needed to be completed after the new council was seated. During the campaign, I understood that the hiring of city administrator, city secretary, and full-time legal representation would require extra time and effort immediately upon taking office. I also understood that the resolution of current legal issues, including those associated with the former and current council members, would come during my term of elected. I was fully prepared, with the information I had at the time, to accept the legal risks and liabilities that resolving these issues would require. If elected, I was also ready and willing to work with the mayor and other council members to put the past behind and truly move the city forward and not cause further embarrassment to the community. When I was elected, these are the things that I hoped that me and my fellow city leaders, working together, could accomplish. However, after attending the second of two long, unproductive meetings on June sixth, twenty twenty-three, my emotions afterwards were a combination of frustration, embarrassment, and concern. Frustrated, the actions of primarily one person had once again sidetracked the meeting and prevented the council from attending to some of the most pressing needs of the city. As a result, the review of potential candidates for administrator and secretary is now being pushed to the third meeting since the new council was seated. Embarrassed, by the way, this person has attempted to circumvent or ignore the Texas Government Code and other legal statutes to obtain the outcomes he desired, and then being extremely argumentative with legal counsel when she pointed out that his proposed actions were illegal, my concerns are made. First, as is previously stated, this person attempted several times to ignore or be indifferent to the laws and procedures of the state to obtain the outcome he wanted and being extremely argumentative with counsel. Second, the others on the council wanted to proceed with another call of meeting on June twentieth, knowing that legal counsel could not attend. Third, based on what I have already seen and heard from this person, how can his future actions and decisions, with or without legal counsel present, impact the level of personal risk and liability I assume by serving on the council? Now, we received an email from our interim attorney on June eighth, twenty twenty-three, notifying the council of the firm's intent to resign at the end of the month. While the tone of this email was very cordial, I can only conclude that the firm's decision to resign and intention to not submit a proposal to continue to serve as full-time legal counsel was based primarily on the way their representative had been treated by this person and to cut their own risk and liability involved in representing our city. After watching these interactions over the course of two meetings, I can foresee this action. Especially if competent legal counsel is not present during all meetings, recklessly entangling the city and counseling future ongoing conflicts, complaints, and potential lawsuits that I prefer not to be personally drawn into. Even with all the best intentions, many issues are far too complex to be left to lay people without the assistance of an attorney, especially as it's in matters of municipal law. Finally, I also underestimated all the complexities involved in the final resolution of complaints and investigations against the current council member and how the council's current and future actions could not only affect the liability for the city, but personally as well. I have little to no confidence in their character and integrity and do not wish to expend the time, effort, and potential personal expenses that are possible defending my reputation and self from the risks and liabilities unnecessarily created by their past, current, and future expected actions. At this time, there is nothing I can personally do to mitigate these new concerns other than choose to remove myself from the situation and resign my seat from the council. I feel the longer that I am associated with them, the more difficult it will be in the future to separate my actions from theirs. Sincerely, David Williams.
Your adjutant.
Let it show on the record that was David David Williams' resignation letter. We shall have to take action.
Uh, your resignation? Okay. Make a motion to object?
Second. Make your motion, so we know what it says.
I'm ready, hey.
I'm sorry, after that, I want to spill after that, there was a motion, you hear discussion.
Oh, okay.
I got a motion in a second to accept your resignation.
All right. Uh.
Yes. Passage unanimously. Discussion of possible action on filling the vacancy of a council member by appointment of the City Council. I make a motion for no action.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for no action.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh.
Aye. Passage unanimously. I will make discussion of possible action on letting the Mayor approach him.
Make a motion for no action on I M B.
I got a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Passage unanimously. I will make swearing in of two council members and Mayor.
Motion to no action on I M G.
I got a motion about a second.
Second.
I got a motion in a second for our discussion.
Aye.
Uh.
Aye. No action unanimously.
That's not a probable order, yeah.
You are correct. I will make discussion of possible action on referring Officer John Mogan. This was presented to us at the illegal meeting on six twenty. Um, Officer Mogan came to us at, on June second, he graduated out of sorority from his police academy. I recommend that we confirm Officer Mogan.
Second.
I didn't make a motion about.
Is this a ratification, or a, or we do it over, does it matter?
It doesn't matter, we can either ratify or refuse action, but to clarify the record.
I would like to just do it all over again, to not ratify anything from the beginning. So I have a motion.
Second. Oh, you think, oh, motion to confirm, please, Officer John Mogan, Mogan?
I have a motion to confirm, Officer. John Mogan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion.
Aye.
Uh.
We'll say Missy seconded that. Roger.
All right.
Aye. Congratulations, Mr. Mogan, who is not here. Discussion of possible action on the confirmation, appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, Court Clerk.
I have a motion to confirm the new Court Clerk, Mrs. Hernandez, with discussion.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Your next motion is? Second, for the discussion.
So I owe you, the voters, an explanation, because, uh, when I went to your doors and I asked you for your vote, I said that I would, uh, do my best to fill the positions in this city with individuals who have been women who were experienced, uh, degree, certified, unnecessary, uh, and were qualified. Well, unbeknownst to me, sometimes the government doesn't work the way you think it should work. And this individual was hired illegally against city ordinance, there is an ordinance for municipal court clerk, and it is specifically stated that court clerk will be appointed by the City Council. And Mr. Hernandez had been working already for a number of weeks. We'd been paying her, there was already a trainer involved, and some other scheduling things. And so I originally thought to object, just because I knew my colleagues were not going to, were going to overrule me, and I was happy about that, to be frank. Uh, I thought to object, but I decided that because Mr. Hernandez was here at the time, she might not be staying. And she's so lovely, and so really loves the job, and wants to do well, and is working hard every single day. I wasn't gonna do that. And so I chose rather instead to take the bullets to eat for me best, rather than give it to her. Uh, and you'll say, well, you didn't do that for Kobe Jaws, you abstained from Kobe Jaws. Yeah, but Kobe Jaws is a police officer, he carries a badge and a gun, he's trained to walk into the fire, take the bullets if necessary. Right, he's a good guy, he can handle that, plus he, we talk, he's fine. Mr. Hernandez did not, so, and I did not want to, in any way, disparten her or sullen her appointment. And so I decided again that I would take the heat for that, so you guys can, you know, you're the man. But that's why I'm here.
Thank you for your transparency.
Any further discussion?
Yes. I'm gonna have to disagree, because one of the reasons we're in the situation that we're in is from non-qualified people in these positions. We are now facing a election that we, non-arsed people, or the council do not want. Because we don't have the qualified people that are detail-oriented, that are educated in municipality, working in these positions. So I feel like she may be sweet, she may be lovely, that's not what I'm looking for. I'm looking for professionalism, I'm looking in business, I'm not trying to make friends. I'm here to fill these positions with qualified people that can do the business of the city, that are dealing with tax dollars. I mean, this is huge, this mistake over an agenda costs this city big money, big time. This sets us back. With, no, this is not personal for me, this is business. And if you made this kind of mistake in the corporate world, you would be gone.
Right.
You would be gone. And again, I'm not here on a personal level with anyone. I just know what is right, what is wrong, and this just costs the taxpayers time, money, and headache. Now, as a court clerk, you're dealing with law, you're dealing with court, you're dealing with judges, you're dealing with probates, you're dealing with warrants, I'm sorry, but I do not want to pay for someone's education. And you, a year out, you might be educated for what we're starting, your salary adds. No, I'm not okay with that, I get where you're coming from, this is not personal, she is very kind. I'm not looking for kind, I'm looking for someone that can do the job. And that's what these people voted us for, is to do our job. And our job is for qualified people retired from business, and I'm here, that's my answer.
In my defense, I said at that meeting that after watching her, that I believe that Mr. Hernandez is going to be, going to be, is future tense, and I get you, I understand where you're coming from. The best municipal court clerk that this city has ever had, and I truly believe that in my heart. That's my only defense, bullets hit my weapon.
And I, we can oversee the future, what we can see is today.
Correct.
And what we can see is that when we're looking at resumes, that these people have education and they have qualification from day one. I again, am not gonna ask these voters, hey, can you pay for this person's education so they can be where we need them to be in here? We need them to be there now, and it is not from lack of interest, people, it is not, I've seen the resumes. We have people applying that have the education and have the background.
Period.
So the thing is, now it's a matter of dispensing, we gotta act. The time starts prevailing these positions, but I mean, there's, there's no excuse now.
So if he lays this agenda, I will just word it, it's not only for the confirmation, but we could also do the reassignment as well, so she could be reassigned.
And I know that we have, I have maybe mentioned this, we have not sat down in a budget workshop. I'm not, I mean, I just, I don't know if I can throw an idea that we're gonna be going into a budget workshop, I throw potentially an idea?
Is it really into possible reassignment of a position? Possibly, yes.
Okay, so one of my thoughts were, is we're, we're looking at a strong city secretary and a strong city manager. With the backlog of information that we are behind right now, they're gonna need help. So if we can reassign, I'm not saying to fire this lady, I'm saying that maybe we can resup, we can even assign her as assistant to those two positions, so that they have someone to do the paperwork, or things that they have bigger fish to fry than go on and put together a package. I mean, so we need someone to assist them. So there'd be a possibility, if we have the money in the budget, to remake that position as an administrative assistant to these two positions. So we're not saying that we're gonna fire her, we're saying that we need more education, the top positions of this city will need more educated people, and more qualified people.
Could we do that as a Russian staff?
You may have to go with a recommendation, please?
Okay, you have your microphone.
Perfect clerk.
Carry your microphone.
It's all, yes, sir. We are desperate to need a perfect clerk. That is another position I plan, I'm asking for, is a planning zoning, because clearly we have a, with a major flow of information from developers, um, and cities, I've worked in before, there's gotta be a frontline person for, for paying two hundred dollars to an engineer, or whatever we're paying him. But we need someone that can do all the organization, and then here it is, it's quick, it's streamlined, it's done. So again, it's just another idea of, well, we're gonna talk about it, but. There are other positions that need, we cannot expect this entire city to grow on three staff members, it's not, it's not easy. Uh, we gotta get rid of them, so that's what our real means.
I love your enthusiasm and input. Um, it's nice to see a council actually discussing things.
Yes.
I would say confirm her as court clerk and get her duties, and then we can always reassign her.
We need a court clerk, and we've already spent a lot of money to train her. So, uh, it's one of those positions where, you know.
But she does not have to be confirmed. Yes, I mean, it's.
It's a matter of legal, legality, it's a matter of following the ordinance.
For a court clerk?
Yeah, we've got to a point.
But she's not gonna be a court clerk. She's temporarily being in that position until we, so how does that legally work?
I don't think that was the intent.
Correct, and motions to confirm her as court clerk.
I didn't know, was that the mayor's intent was to use her as interim?
I, I can't speak to that, um.
Did you review the hire, since it wasn't ordinance issue?
I did not.
And what happens if we don't confirm?
If you don't confirm her, then she is terminated, because if you don't confirm her, she's hired as court clerk.
I would go with confirming her as court clerk at this point, and then put out an add-on board after we're qualified, or court clerk. And at that point in time, maybe re, uh, put her in a different, uh, position in the other city. It's not necessarily get hired. We're not gonna hire people that way anymore, she's gonna be a hell of a over, but we need a co, court working. If we don't do something to be, we're gonna miss the next court date, we're gonna get further behind and all that stuff.
We're already sending her to Austin to train, though, okay? It's a lie.
But that's what I'm saying, I don't think we should spend that money on training her and confirming that we're gonna send her to school, when I have six faculty resumes right here, the people that work in legal, that we have, people that work in cities, people that work in courts, that are so much more qualified.
They didn't apply for court clerk. They applied city administrator, and city secretary.
There's people that could enter any composition, so how do they not really know what they want, they just want a job? So why we just work for them, doesn't matter to them?
At this point, we can put that out there.
Yeah, we need to put a court clerk out there, so they don't even know what we're doing.
But we also don't know if they're not interested, that's true.
But we know that they are interested in the other positions.
When does the, when does the training for court, court active in Austin that she's going to?
July tenth and fourteenth.
Let's assume that, uh, she's turned this because she is very energetic, and very, I talked to her, and she is very, uh, excited about the position. So let's say that this is turned into her dream job, now we take it away from her, and now she's, okay, well, I'm out of here. Now all that money that we spent is wasted.
Okay, how much does she actually do when it comes to court compared to what she makes? She's there with our attorney, the judge, what? How hard is her pride in her job?
So she, she heats minutes, she processes everything as to like sending out notices. Um, she's there during court, she, with the judge, basically assistant for the judge almost.
And her job's hard enough, and we hired a seventy-five dollar an hour trainer for twenty hours, and a four-day conference for her to do. Is there some certification for this, or what? There is?
There is, yeah, there's certain levels, you can, they can get trained up for them, there's a level one, two, and three.
So can we re-late that and reassign her position, uh, title, and still retain her, but not her court clerk? Because she needs to be a Z clerk, we need a, an assistant, but to make her the official court clerk, I'm not.
Okay, um, we actually have a couple of options, so we can confirm her today, that means you have a court clerk in place, things can keep running, we can still maintain, you know, the, the court will run as it should. Um, and then, you know, it gives you a little bit of, remember, stopgap, some time, we can post for a court clerk. And then she's more than welcome to apply for that position, and at the same time, if y'all wanna post for a permanent clerk, whatever your other positions are, and then she can apply for any of those positions. And then you would analyze her just like you would any other person who applies and is interviewed. And then you would analyze her just like you would any other person who applies and is interviewed. And then at that point, you know what her interest is, you know which position she wanted to be in, and then you can hire her for whatever she applied, and we think she would be best fit for it.
But she, but she wouldn't be confirmed as an interim. She would be confirmed as a permanent. And the plan would just say, oh, here, well, you're losing your job, but we confirmed you, now we're going to move you on over here. Can we?
You can, yeah. You're just confirming her position now. That doesn't mean that you can't post for that position tomorrow.
So, we just can't say, you know, let her, our board states the city councilman removed the court clerk for incompetence, corruption, misconduct, or malfeasance, and all this after due notice and opportunity for a hearing before the city council.
Exactly. So, if we confirm her, then we can't remove her. So, why confirm her?
We can remove her if she does the, 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 uh, infractions, just. If she doesn't, then we have a great court clerk.
So, what the lawyer said is null and void.
We don't have a great court clerk. That's the whole premises of your study.
I agree with you, and I know where you're coming from, and I'm with you. The problem is, this was done, nobody caught it. And now we're in a position where it's almost worth, but we've already paid her, for how many weeks has she been here? A month or two?
Yes, sir.
Plus all the training, plus what's going to happen in July. It's, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm in favor, because I've watched her work again. I, I understand, and it contradicts what I said on campaign trail, but I believe in my heart. She is going to be the best court clerk we've ever had. And to take that away from her now, after we confirmed it last meeting, it wasn't even really a meeting, unfortunately, uh, just doesn't seem right to me.
But I don't rule on being.
Well, there's also logic here. Number one, the money that the city has put out to train this lady. The money that's been paid, insurance, payroll taxes, the seventy-five dollar an hour trainer. All that's been invested.
For a better system, won't it?
No, it wouldn't make her a court clerk, because that was what the training was for. It's court clerk though.
Let me, give y'all one, um... If we don't want her as court clerk, we can always make her an administrative assistant to the city administrator, the city secretary, and a court clerk. So, she's still, we're still able to utilize that money that we paid on the court clerk side. But she also gets to learn more, because she seems like she's going to need to learn. And she gets to help more broadly at the city.
I get your logic, but you haven't asked her what she wanted. Maybe she doesn't want that. Maybe she's, maybe she's going to say, you know, it's court clerk or nothing. Then I'll tell you your job.
But I think if we're, we're talking with citizens, it's our responsibility to think long-term and right now. And right now, to hire someone that is qualified right now, is makes more sense. It's just, I don't care, I mean, and this is just personally me speaking, the money that we've invested, if it goes down the journey, because she's still not where we need her. She's still here. So, we have to invest more money, and more money to get her qualified, when we can just bring somebody in that's ready. Now, if you want to do what you said, make her assistant to those three departments, where she can still do court clerk and utilize the money we invested in her at this point. She can still assist the main court.
Yes.
Court clerk. And assist the city manager and the city secretary. She can be all departments, and yes, we can present that to her. But again, we, is our deciding what these jobs are, the partners are for these jobs, am I correct? And if she doesn't want to, then, I'm sorry, but she's willing to walk away if she, if she wants to. I would like her to say, I think that would be a good, ask a good community or for a good citizen, is to do, help with all three, if it will be our main court clerk, we have qualified people. Yes.
Where are those qualified people?
Out in the world.
Yeah, out in the world, and not knowing that we have an open position.
We're, we're going to argue about this all day, so I'm going to say, we should probably just table this. Ask her Monday if that's something she would be interested in. We're going to have a meeting later that week, and we can bring back that information.
When's our next court date?
July 15th.
Eighteen.
Fifteen?
Yes, sir.
We cannot hire somebody, take the left position by this, if we haven't posted it all yet, correct?
She would still serve in a court clerk capacity, so we can make those decisions to her. Because that's what she's currently fulfilling.
But isn't that what it's given us into this problem now, is that we keep saying that we're going to, we're going to? I mean, and I'm not trying to be argumentative here, but y'all understand, well, we need to post for a court clerk. We have tons of resumes. Give these people the opportunity, because they say, if those six that I chose, or some that y'all chose, and say, none of them wanted, then we'll run them. But why keep running and running and running the work? You're just asking for more of what you already have. We already have people that may be qualified for this. Call them, say, are you willing, is this, position's open, is this something you're interested in? If they shut us down, they shut us down, at least we attempted. But this keep running T M L, keep pulling in more resume, talk about it, uh, hand hunter, it's just enough for standing on heels at this point.
Well, let's put the blame on this one, where it really falls, which is on a willfully ignorant mayor, therefore deliberately incompetent, uh, who hired this, this poor girl, Lily? And our city attorney missed it. So, you know, let's hope.
Okay, so, outside of all that, I think what you're wanting to do is put on a future agenda to hire a court clerk. And also on our next agenda to reassign her. And give her that option, obviously helping to her curves.
To be an administrative assistant to those three departments.
Yes.
Yes. Does the pay change on that?
So, I mean...
I don't know that you can take away or mention that, I mean, I don't know. And we're talking about certain degree department, so not to go over an hour's.
I think that's agreeable to serve in that capacity for that amount of money. We can always reevaluate at the end of the year. We are supposed to do revaluations on how much people make, so that way we can make sure we're competitive.
Okay, you want to table five then?
I'm just going to counsel.
Do you have the table that can be assigned? We do have a motion on the floor to confirm.
Oh, we do? We're discussing. So, did we have a second?
Motion to confirm?
Yes, we did.
So, there's no further discussion, we will vote to confirm.
Okay. If we don't confirm her, she is fired?
No.
Essentially, yes, because you, she's not confirmed there for the position she holds. It's, you're basically terminating her.
Okay, but the motion has other places. She said, if we confirm her for this motion, we can then move her around if we want to, because it says reassignment.
Correct.
So, okay, we got it.
Or we could pull the motion and table.
Yes.
So, who haven't made the original motion, who was all permissioned?
Okay.
Was that you? I don't know if I draw.
It was still.
I'm going to take it.
Still in the second floor?
A motion to confirm the court clerk, so.
Aye.
Missy?
No.
We're going to vote no's, so that way there's a tiebreaker, and then we get to revisit. Motion tabled.
So, does that make it, it's put off to the next?
I make the motion to table this item until our next meeting, but it's our next. I'll make the motion to table this item until July 11th, with the possibility of reassignment of course, but I'm going to. I make the motion to table this item until July 11th. Do I have a second?
I second.
Do you have a motion in the second meeting for discussion? No further discussion, Scott?
No.
Missy?
No. I want a discussion, please.
Oh.
No discussion, please.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Motion carries to table until the July 11th meeting. She is not fired. I am the day discussion impossible action on confirming Brian Thompson as the City of Gandhi Fire Department Fire Chief.
Big motion to approve or confirm Brian Thompson as City of Gandhi Fire Department Fire Chief.
I'll second. I have a motion in the second meeting for other discussion. No further discussion, Scott?
Aye.
Missy?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. That's the gentleman, say.
Sergeant, did you say that?
No.
Mine, so. Have you listed?
I am Jake. I'm okay, discussion impossible action on confirming purchase and installation of electronic locks on all city buildings. So, the gentleman that was here Tuesday, he's out of town this weekend. He was willing to do it today, but I feel that it's better to present in person. And that way we can have a better understanding. But the background of this is to basically have badges for every employee, all of us. And if you want to walk in that front door after hours, you have to scan. If you want to walk in that office, you have to scan. If you want to walk into P D, you have to scan. And it's all done by permissions, how much your job title is. If you want to go down to the wastewater treatment plant, and, let's say, I would go down to wastewater treatment, but I don't really need to be down there unless I'm with other workers, work on their direction. So, it's going to show a red on the access system, and I can't navigate. It's a safe unit for us, so people can't access parts of our buildings that they shouldn't be in. Certainly, software should not be in the chief's office. It should just, he might have something in there related to that.
Right, right.
So, they shouldn't have access.
Are these going to be on, say, gun rooms, evidence rooms, and things too, or?
So, a security audit will need be done by whichever company we choose. And they will basically tell us what covers and access points may be done. And I was originally thinking that we could go deeper and try to have our public works people do this. But, I forgot that I talked to, he said, well, if you have a fire, if they can't get out because they didn't install the lock correctly, city's in a lot of liability. So, a sensor, essentially, you get in with your badge, and a sensor behind the door lets you out. If that's, it unlocks the door from the top. So, if you installed that wrong, they die in a fire, or they're in the city. So, I would prefer, that's what I mean, I'm going to do this.
Who, is it remotely managed, or do we need to train someone to actually do the required edits and, you know, basic upgrades, things like that?
There's different systems. And I asked him to be here at our next meeting to go over in person. But, we can do it remotely, on computer, on our phone. Uh, just depends on what route we go.
We were there.
We, I mean, we're going to choose what we want. Um, they're going, the security engineer's going to obviously present us the best route for us.
And we'll have to have someone trained to manage it.
I mean, I don't know how much training you're going to need. You're going to have to field foot someone's name, get in there, create a badge, and assignment permissions.
They're going to remove, and power goes out, and everything's sneaky, and I don't know how all that works.
So, do we get access statements, uh, periodically or monthly, like to see who, like, our city administrator to see who's accessing stuff, or is that something they have to request from the company? The, well, see who's, like, we have a law.
So, I mean, it's a, there's an apartment report, we could request that information every month.
I think that would be something our city administrator would want to kind of scan through, kind of see who's accessing.
Well, our city administrator would have access to that twenty-four seven, to the program. Y'all each got a holder, last time it was in blue. So, the initial steps would be the site assessment. Then we're going to conduct a comprehensive assessment for all army physical buildings. Originally, I was just taking city hall, but our wastewater treatment plant needs to be looked at as a secure facility. This building, our fire department, um, any gated access, like our remote sites.
If that's the case, we'll sell you our doors, or?
That's your question, sir. Then this security engineer come in and analyze the findings from the site assessments to determine what exactly we need for each facility. They look at the entry points, the sensitive areas, and the access control, what was needed. After that thing, we look at the solution design proposal. She has a detailed solution designed based on the site assessment and security needs analysis. They would then create a proposal that outlines the access control system, implementation, finding. And something I really like, they would have stakeholder engagement, which would include city council, security, decision makers, like our city administrator, police department. They would, throughout the entire process, literally get a base for all the ones, they would ask us, hey, is this working, what can we do differently? Do you need more security at this building right now, or do you want to, however we must do it? Um, so, this, and Yel will explain it a lot better than I will. But this booklet kind of goes over a synopsis of what they offer. Um, they, they offer, uh, we'll know a little bit more about this, but the state assistance for the wastewater treatment plant, they can install those. Um, they enable an alarm system, so where our levels, let's say our... State assistance. Little bit of authority levels, and they remotely, say they want to do it on Saturdays and Sundays, to get over time. Yel will do that remotely from their house, T C Q. Uh, that system is two hundred plus thousand dollars for our entire network. E, less expensive option, which they also can do, is an alarm system, they kind of tell us those levels, but our guys just want to come in and check everything. But if we have a leak of some crawl sewage, they'll know. Can't get into details of that, but definitely need that. So, benefits of an access control system is enhanced security. Here it places all of our key locks, all of our number pads that for years have been the same code and haven't been changed. It's customized to what we want. How many other access points we want to spend money on, they're going to tell us what you need. So, we can face it how we want to. And then, obviously, the rules.
Does our current punch system log the access? Just a curiosity. I'm talking about these back here. You go to our, do we know if that happens?
I can speak on the fire department, if I can install that, and it's just. Unless they change it, but never as of the day, so I can see.
So, there's one pass code? We have the whole department has, they don't have individual passwords?
Okay, there they do. Well, they, never, I was in part of it. They reset individual codes, but obviously people would forget and share and. Over here. Kathy, you may be able to skip to this one, but I could probably go to that back door and use the same as I code from five years ago. Had to try it. Not my business to do that, but.
Well, to me, it's a security issue at this point. Any discrepancies please, or any pad, and I'm not saying there is, I'm just saying, any, the government, anybody that's been fired, quit, gone, anything. They need to cease access to all city information.
Absolutely.
Because we're setting ourselves up for liability retaliation under the newer scenarios. Again, I'm not saying this it was, or is, but I'm saying the scenario could evolve.
So just letting y'all know, when I was there last week or week before fixing the fire truck for public work to use. I entered a code for whenever I was in the fire department and it worked. So that was back in twenty eighteen?
If that's the case, then I probably still have the code to block everybody out of that building. Which isn't okay.
Okay, so we know that we're good.
Well, we, they changed it, maybe that's extra.
Are we on board?
Are you, uh, yeah, it seems like. How expensive is it?
It depends on how.
Uh, we don't know what I do.
I mean, it's gonna be tens of thousands of dollars.
Can we get a vote before we go further, to see what, are they, are they going to ask for money before they come out and do the site assessment and all that, or not?
Well, I think, I mean, yeah, I don't know, we, what's our handle now?
I can't speak to how that works. I could call them and ask.
He'll be here, right?
He'll be here, the next day.
Do they have a dollar lock wired or also order lock remote?
So we can do both in access systems from the room of, and wireless systems, because batteries surround. Um, I can give you an example from the fire department years ago, remember I was in charge of it? Our battery had, we couldn't get in there. Well, we, I programmed day one garage door, I'm the main garage door opener, just in case.
He's pro, he's pro.
The remote is going to be a lot cheaper than wired, because wired would require mainframe, require wiring, uh, to each individual door, each individual lock.
So that's what they've got, you guys, and we have a fire and they can get out.
You put panics on all the doors.
If you could, that's just, I know it's awesome, you could look at that and see if it's cheaper to do that option. Maybe looking at replacing either rechargeable batteries or just regular batteries.
See what the cost is and most of them, because I run into our own panics. So we're on the inside, so if you have to get out, you, you get the bar and you get outside. Uh, electrical, original, chemical rooms, it's nature, they usually are not, but where people are, they're on panics.
So for exterior doors, yes, you're going to have that, that's a fire code. But for, let's say, police chief's door. You're not going to have panic to get out, that's what should be careful of it. If y'all want, I, y'all instruct me to do this, I can have them come out if it's free to do a site assessment and tell us that way they have. Instead of just informing us, delivery systems can do, we can know, hopefully, I think, have a quote. But at least we have a better idea.
Can I have, can I ask a question? So are we talking about the main entrances as well? And if there are going to be those key codes on there, will there be in allotted time where they're not locked? That way, in case if we do have meetings, people can come and go as meetings and then, like, the citizens come in and out.
Yes, so like your normal business hours, it will be set sort of the front door, it's unlocked. Um, we have a panic system where they can remotely lock it, uh, but. If we have a meeting, it will be set, so where it's unlocked, um, that can be adjusted through the programming. You would know more about that. But to answer your question, yes, you can remotely unlock things, take the ability, for example. We have multiple times where our police department has been on a call, they can't go unlock the building. So then I get a phone call from citizens saying, hey, I need you to unlock the building. And I'm like, hey, I don't. I can't leave them. That's the police department's skill. Now they're thirty, thirty early, get it, it's the late forty-five minutes. Now, hey, hey, surrender, they should remotely unlock for them at a specified time and then lock them in.
Police have access to remotely.
So, I mean, if y'all want them to, it is free. They're not doing the assessment.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's see what I can see.
Can the sensors be hardwired with battery backup?
I mean, I would say maybe the safety power without.
Right.
Roger, what happens in a fire situation with a system like that, when you're outside, fire department's outside, now you got a fire inside, and all the locks are, are burned out or whatever? Do they automatically release at that point, or are the doors they lock?
In schools, the exterior doors have locks. I call it, they have a regular lock, and there is a box at the main entrance, sometimes back at the zoo, that's the fire department goes to. They didn't have a key to get into the school. But on schools, you have this for access control, so then you also have key control for that person.
So the fire department has what they call the ops box on buildings. The schools have them, and if there was an incident at the school and I needed to get in, I have a key in the engine. I unlock the lock, it's a key to the school, and that's I get into the school after hours.
And we would have something similar here or nowhere? Just thinking about a fire situation where nobody's here.
That's really a question we're going to be, I don't know if the ops box would be the most appropriate thing, or. If it's triggered by a smoke alarm and it lets their badges, so they're getting their badges as well.
I would suggest you have a few, the exterior doors have locks also, and a key lock. But then that kind of defeats the purpose. I can anywhere, I want to do a school, I have a key. But I don't carry a guard.
So can the, can, um, can the keys be over the, sorry, electronic lock, the old road with the key in the same compartment? So then that may be the one to the fire chief for emergency situation?
Well, the fire chief's going to have a badge to access almost every part of the building, because they're going to get access.
What I was thinking is, do you know, in a, in a massive destruction situation? If what they, I guess they're going to be, a question for him, how he, fire would affect the system itself, whether it locks itself down, or whether it released, or whatever. So I guess.
So if y'all tell me to contact them and have them come do an assessment, I'll ask that question and bring it back, and they'll also be here.
So that's possible action that we can do here?
Is like that resolution?
What action would you like to do?
To, uh, this one says to approve the purchase and installation, can we amend it a little?
Possibly, uh, I would like to amend it, I mean.
To have the mayor pro temp contact the vendor and have him come out.
Yeah, but what I would recommend is, in this particular action, I would just disable it.
Yeah.
And then give him the opportunity to make this connection.
Yes.
All right, to you, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp.
I mean, yeah, you don't need to do it, or direct staff to do it, I really don't want to put anything else on her, but it's very difficult, you know?
Well, I'm happy to work together.
I'll second.
You don't have to put you in.
Well, I'm not making a motion to direct you to do it.
Correct, no, the only action we can take is, is for the approval of the.
Make a motion to table item K until. I guess I'm going to have to stay July eleventh. Until July eleventh.
I have a motion to table until July eleventh, item K, I'll have a second.
Now, second, yes.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? No further discussion, Roger Carter.
Yes.
Yes, yes. I am in a discussion impossible action on appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer responsible for illegal or illegal. So Kathleen, you still haven't gotten anything for.
No, I'm sorry, I'm okay.
I still have not gotten anything for T N O, even though it's been stated it was since I checked T N O, there was nothing for the R F P. We have interviewed multiple candidates, but. I think we really need to take any actions since we don't have anything. Correct.
Correct.
Will it work now?
It's very down.
Oh, okay. Make a motion to table, no action, item.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott.
Aye.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Passage unanimously. I am in a discussion impossible action on appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal from a public office, city attorney. Possibly hiring slash accepting a contract for an interview attorney.
Make motion to accept the contract of toes, Taylor Olson, that is as well as the human.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to accept T O A S E. As the contractor, T O A S E, as presented. Any further discussion? No discussion, Scott.
Aye.
Yes, can you explain anything to them?
Yes.
Yes, so we interviewed three different attorneys. This Spencer, this Carter, so. Yeah, Spencer Carter and Dean from T O A S E. This seemed to be the best option for the city, it is a firm, it's not a single person, their rates were very in line with what we were looking for. I personally think it's the best choice for the city. Passage unanimously. I am in a discussion impossible action on approving a contract for legal services. This will be the legal services that T O A S E.
Make motion to approve the legal, uh, approve the, uh, contract for legal services from T O A S E, uh, as presented.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Are we going to give a phrase and who will be signing with that contract?
Oh, thank you. May I make my motion?
Yes, may I?
Or is it, I may?
May I?
All right, make a motion to, uh, ex, uh, to approve the contract for legal services by toes and assign the authority to sign the legal document to Mayor Pro Temp.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor to approve the legal services contract for T O A S E. With the amendment of allowing Mayor Pro Temp to sign for those, for that contract.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, Scott.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh.
Aye. Motion, that's unanimously. I am in a discussion impossible action on responding to a petition for consent to creation of a political subdivision in the Heights. Territorial jurisdiction of the City of Gombe, Texas, for the proposed district named Johnson County Municipal District. Mister outside the legal description, do you have any further information since when it's on here on?
Uh, I have a petition, um, that I can pull up. But yes, we anticipated that the linear engineer would be here, since he's the one that was served with this petition and has the, uh, the knowledge about this particular project. But let me pull it up, you guys.
Well, we want to come to strength of this.
We are, um, so once the petition is filed, you have ninety days to watch either an objection or consent to. Um, and that runs up, I believe, on July thirty.
When?
July, July thirtieth.
What?
So where is our city attorney now, or was he told to be here?
City engineer.
I think you're not, I believe he was aware of you.
Yes.
Of the email.
Is it that he's logging the original petitions when they come in, is that him?
He was certain of this petition, nine days ago. Uh, he, yeah, it was dated equal third, I believe.
And, and if we, when we get a permit clerk, that will stop, we'll have someone in the city that serves that function.
Most likely, yes. Anything that would be dealing with developments, uh, plaques, things that, I think, would go through permit clerk.
So this came in somewhere around May.
April.
April. Did you guys know that? Nope.
I have.
Not until recently.
Was there any discussion as to why is that normal?
Is this pushing in the law this far, normal, to, for something as, that is, I think?
And that gets to what would be normal, depending on who's normal you're talking about, and we're very happy with that.
So traditionally, your city administrator would be the first point of contact, they would sit in the meeting, review it. They have a couple of days to review, they send it to the city engineer, and they suppose to send it to the public works director for Johnson County for their comment. Then it comes back at their, oh, meet or two, and it's supposed to go on our agenda.
Did Johnson County get a copy of this, what, presentation?
Uh, I don't have that information prepared with me, but typically, T C Q sends those notices to all affected entities for response.
What are our options on this, Nicole?
Uh, you either, we either object to it, we have a law and actually written objection, or we would not object, in which case, after ninety days, that's by, by law. Would be the effect, is that we don't object to it.
And what grounds do we have to give?
If you don't want them creating a new district inside your entity. If you don't want them creating a mud district inside your E T J.
All right, yeah, no, I don't want to have a mud district.
No, thank you.
Wait, I already got a horrible moustrosity on that side of the room. Do you know anything about this, uh, Mrs. Price at all? I mean, I just had, did have to believe Mike knows. Mike, where is the actual? I mean, there's five tracks here and they're all separate. Where does the facility get set up? Do you know? I'm talking about the wastewater and all of that.
I couldn't see where any development agreement, uh, I'm going to leave.
Aren't we gonna have to sign a contract with this entity to, like we did with Belmont?
Uh, not for this particular action. This is just a petition, petition to create a mud, and then like she said, the affected parties can either object or not object. So at this point, we're just either objecting or not objecting.
And that stops it immediately, for now.
It lodges an objection. TCQ takes that into consideration about whether or not they will actually give the, uh, the appropriate permits at that point.
May we ask a few?
So let's do a little.
May I ask your opinion?
Do you want me to have the mic, please?
Yep.
I mean, you want more information to that? Yes, and what might I avoid? What, your opinion, on by district and the county?
Mud districts in the county, of course, are, are a growing item that we're all dealing with. Uh, the county has been presented once with a request for a letter of non-opposition, and the commissioner's court voted to not issue that letter of non-opposition, which would have only assisted this mud in being created through legislation. By not issuing any letter either way, then they just go to TCQ and apply. Even if we lodge a complaint, that doesn't guarantee that the mud doesn't still get approved by TCQ.
Right.
Typically developers want your support so they can go through legislation because it's quicker. TCQ takes longer, costs them a little more money, but it's pretty much a guaranteed approval.
So if the city, if the city denies it and the county denies it, they won't take that into consideration?
They may take it into consideration, but just because you don't support it, it's not meaning it's not going to still happen.
The county doesn't have a whole lot of say, do they? Just, all these muds anyway.
No, nobody does.
Nobody does.
I mean, in, in the education that we've had to receive very quickly on how muds work, and who approves them, and how those things happen, TCQ pretty much has all of his control.
And Senator Gervin says.
With all the new, with all the new laws that's come, is that gonna help or hurt us in the regulation system?
I haven't followed how it will affect municipality, so I couldn't speak to that.
What about county clause, um, for y'all's regulatory?
As long as they meet the platting and permitting requirements, I don't know how to change those types of developments.
Sure.
Yes, you're right.
So the tracks of land are at eight six four six River Hills Road. Across eighty-five hundred and fifty-four point five zero acres.
It's actually three tracks, which are one thousand thirty-two acres.
There's another one at eighty-seven twenty-one F N twenty-three thirty-one, that's four hundred and fifteen point one seven two acres. And six thousand one, kind of road number seven, which is sixty-six point six seven acres.
I've got five of them. In my big order.
I'm looking at the petition.
In the development agreement, I don't think you all have that.
Is that going here towards just barely outside of town, off of one seventy-one?
You are correct, there are five tracks.
So this, right here. Here's got the, this land right here. All the way down here, all the way up to ten oh six and back up is one of the tracks.
And how much is it a acre?
One thousand thirty-two acres of all, of all five tracks.
And they're gonna, so. They're gonna run pipelines between the tracks? Is that what I'm understanding here, since it's all? Because they're in different areas.
Is this, um, one developer or is this a group of developers wanting to do this? Local developers or?
So again, all I have is the petition. I just tell you that the petition was filed.
River Hills Real Estate.
Correct, River Hills Real Estate LLC by Robert Allen Watson.
But that's just a man here, so.
That's the person. So that's, that is who is petitioning to create this mud district. It could be a single developer, it could be the representative for all the developers. It's not clear from the petition.
That's who owns it. It is this candidate, Karen.
That's where the affidavit was signed.
Who wins this? Is that the law firm?
That's what I assume, yeah. They're a large law firm that protects the land developers.
So the second large parcel is right here. It'll go right here, come around, goes down somewhere over here, I don't have the boundary lines for each property, but it was around, it was back.
Is that twelve thirty-two on the far left?
Good try. Cool, man.
It is.
And these, they'll, once they do this mud district, is it possible to be annexed in the city later, or is this something that's, um, self-contained?
Yes, it can be annexed in the city. That's the problem with muds, because once we're annexed in the city, now you have this independent utility district operating in the city that we have no control over.
And you put it down.
So I think we need to do a little education. So here's a PowerPoint that was provided by Mr. Cooper. On the twenty twenty-two TCA Summer Conference.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
What is a municipal, you took, you made a read this, you feel like reading yourself.
Go read.
What is it?
Hey, just, there, there's also a group going around that's educating council members, if you wanna get in touch with them, that can come and answer all your questions about it, if you guys want that, let me know, that put this together.
And if there's no control that we have, just what we're just speaking of.
Right.
So I'm gonna skip towards the end and show you that part of if we approve it or if we deny, what happens. Oh, and just seeing, uh, they have.
What?
What, they have what?
Within the.
Within the.
Then they're. So why was the landlord or developer choosing to create the mud? Originally, this was gonna be a bid, and I guess they changed it to a mud. We've been talking about this development, now that I know where it's at, um, for about nineteen months. It just came back and forth, and we never really got anything with it, but. Developers, the financing vehicle is why they like it. The developer constructs the facilities, and once there is sufficient taxable value to support the issuance of bonds, the board will issue bonds and reimburse the developer. It avoids requirements related to investor-owned utilities, such as the pub oversight versus the public utility commission, and break-up rule. Entity to own, operate, and maintain facilities after the developer completes the development and the management income. The developer will be reimbursed for the infrastructure cost. The TCQ creation process is relatively easy and well-established. They have control. Developers will control the board of directors, and thus can ensure that the bonds are issued for reimbursement purposes. Receive limitations with other types of funding mechanisms like PIDs, which this one originally proposed that.
What is the P I D stand? What does P I D stand for?
Public.
Uh, I haven't heard that term before.
So loans are created either by the TCQ or the Texas Legislature. This outlines the TCQ process, statutory and regulatory provisions, Texas Water Code, the Texas Local Government Code, and the Texas Administrative Code. Steps to creating mud in the ETJ of a city without city consent. Landowner must be, be city consent to the creation, and for the proposed districts in the ETJ, the landowner must allow the county to provide comments on the creation. If the city does not consent to the creation of a district within ninety days after the date of the city, after the date the city receives the written request for consent, owners of at least fifty percent of the land may petition the city to make a, make available water service, sewer service, or both. Before submitting the petitions to the city, notice of the petition must be given by posting the petition for ten days in three public places in the area of the proposed district and publishing it in a newspaper. The petition must be presented to the city secretary or clerk. If within a hundred and twenty days the date of the government body receives the petition, the city fails to make a contract providing for the water and sewer service within the statutorily prescribed time periods, the landowners may petition the TCQ for creation. Commitment must provide that construction of the facilities begin within two years and will be substanti- substantially completed within four, four point five years after the date of the petition. If no agreement is reached, that failure constitutes the city's consent to the creation. A petition for the creation of a mud is then filed by the cust- are the owners of fifty percent of the land with the TCQ. After the petition is reviewed by the TCQ, notice of this, notice of the petition and how to request a hearing will be provided by mail to interested persons in the county court, and the, and the landowner must publish notice once a week for two consecutive weeks in a regular, published, or circulated in the county. If there are hearing requests, the TCQ commissioners will determine if the requesting parties are affected parties. If the commissioner determined that one or more of the hearing questers is affected, the matter will be referred to the state office of administrative hearing for a contested pace hearing. After the hearing is concluded, the administrative law judge will prepare a proposal for decision, which is a recommendation to the TCQ commissioners regarding whether the application should be granted or denied. After the commissioner is determined to grant the petition, the district will be created. The aggrieved party may appeal the decision, which is to be completed in an expedient manner. The court shall hear the appeal within a hundred and twenty days after the date the appeals filed. Laws or other security are required. The.
From the any party?
Any party appealing the decision of the district court. How can a city stop the creation of a mud? Interintend agreement to provide the services after the city receives the petition. Why a landowner might not be agreeable to obtaining city services? No reimbursement if the city is unable to utilize a bid slash T I R Z to finance the infrastructure. If annexation is required, the overall tax rate for the district exceeds other competitive developments. If annexation is required, the developer does not want to comply with city development standards. It is less expensive to drill wells and salt package plants as the development grows than to extend facility size for ultimate build-out to the city's facilities. And also file a hearing request with the TCQ protesting the creation of the district.
Almost there. Is that what the city attorney would do? File a petition?
That is right.
Okay.
Issues the TCQ will consider in a hearing, compliance with the process, negotiation of agreement to serve. If the city is able to serve, provide a will, serve there. Proper notice, proper petitioner, does landowner that petition the TCQ is still on the land? How can the city stop the creation of a mud? Issues TCQ will consider in a hearing. Texas Water Code. In, in determining if the project is feasible and practical, and if it is necessary and would be of benefit to the land included in the district, the commissioner shall consider the availability of comparable services from other systems, including the minimum to water districts, municipalities, and regional authorities. The reasonableness of projected construction costs, tax rates, and water and sewer rates, and whether or not the district and its system and subsequent development within the district will have an unreasonable effect on the following: land donation, subsidence, groundwater level within the region, recharge capability of a groundwater source, natural runoff rates and drainage, water quality, and total tax assessments of all land located within the district. Issues the TCQ will consider in a hearing continue. The availability of comparable services from other systems, including the minimum to water districts, municipalities, and regional authorities. The reasonableness of projected construction costs, tax rates, and water and sewer rates. The unreasonable effect on the following groundwater level within the region, natural runoff rates and drainage, water quality. Why might a city oppose or consent to the creation of a mud if the city limits are ETJ? Reasons to consent to the creation of a mud. City doesn't have the facilities or the ability to provide the services. Whether the city is the retail or wholesale water or sewer provider or not, the city will be responsible for operating and maintaining parks, groundwater facilities, et cetera. And the mud with its taxing authority present in an age today will have those responsibilities. The likelihood of success and cost associated with protesting the application. Reasons to oppose the creation of a mud. Regionalization and proliferation of wells and package plants, duplicated and governmental entities which can cause voter and customer confusion, lack of experience by a mud board to operate and maintain facilities. The development proposed, the developer has failed to adequately demonstrate the feasibility of the project and the viability of the mud. For muds in the ETJ, assuming there is an agreement to annex the mud, if the debt is not paid for, paid before annexation, the city will assume the debt when the development is annexed. Let me emphasize this. For muds in the ETJ, assuming there is an agreement to annex the mud, if the debt is not paid before annexation, we will take on that debt. For muds in the ETJ, assuming there is an agreement to annex the mud, if the debt is paid before annexation, the city will be assuming thirty-year old facilities. Thus, maybe we need to be in repair or don't need current standards, or maybe just need to be paying out services and doing what's built.
So a quick question on that, then. Uh, who regulates those facilities during that thirty-year period?
The mud, the city does not.
What about the county? What, they're, they're, they're self-governing?
They are their own entity. We have, in the past, we've had a little bit of say, but it's just, will you do this? We meet our standards.
Right.
Um, okay, wise. They can do what they want. They can tax what they want by law.
What if we can annex?
All right.
You'd have to give everybody the freedom to annex. You can't force them to annex.
This shows twenty fifteen Biggerstaff Healthville, Godo Acosta LP. Are you, are you familiar with the muds in, in this paper? Like, because this, this document is, I think, Greg, is this one, uh, seven years old now, so I wonder?
What's what's seven years old?
Well, we've got copyright twenty fifteen Biggerstaff P, Hillgato Acosta, looks like they.
I don't, I don't know those specific sources. There's a, a conservative group in Johnson County that's going around educating people, and this is one of the products they're using.
Okay.
Um, I can find out if you want. But I mean, to put it in perspective, the money that they're, that you're talking here, so. But I mean, to put it in perspective, the money that they're, that you're talking here, so, so Carroll Farms is sixteen, seventeen hundred individual homesites. On the, on their recent election, they were, if all of the bonds passed by one person, James McCallboke, that's nine hundred million in debt. So do the, do the math on that many residences, nine hundred million in debt. You're talking about five hundred thousand per home site. How, that debt, they're in their minds, if they approve those, that the lawyer, the law firm is not releasing the election results to me. The law firm, they ran the election. So in their minds, that's five hundred thousand dollars in debt per proposed home site for the Carroll Farms development site. They probably think that that debt's gonna get spread across an annexation to a lot more people because who could have five hundred thousand dollars in debt per home site? That's crazy. So like I said, there was an ad, there was a dollar applicable tax on that, nine hundred million dollars on, I think, four or five different bond proposals. Don't know which ones got approved. I can't get the answer to that, but... Just to, to, to wrap your head around the amount of money that you're talking.
I see.
You know, so it's a lot of money. Big, big money, and then lifetime revenue streams for the, the local business people that get involved with these, which are real estate agents, uh, developers, and insurance companies. That's who was requested to be on the board. It's a big money-making machine. I was paying more in Colorado to flush my toilet than I was watering him because of stuff like this, to flush your toilet. So it's, it's, needs to, if you really have the visibility on, whatever way you, you guys decide to go.
That development is recently Carol was removed, was, uh, null and, uh, no, made null and void, wasn't it? Aye?
A maturity of the development agreement was that they were part of the state intact.
Do we know which parts of it are? Just like a theory.
Not off the top of my head, but I could look it up and get it to you.
No, we got a question? No, we got a question?
I'm, I just, one of the things that I'm concerned about, and it has happened in some other developments, is, I live in Canyon Ridge. That's a relatively newer development. And we're having major problems out there with drainage, water runoff, and all that because, you know, they weren't done correctly. They weren't done to, like, the engineering. Um, and so as we start to get these, you know, I think that that's one of the things reading through there, you know, when it talks about, you know, water runoff and all those things, that those are really big concerns. I mean, we, as a neighborhood, we're a smaller neighborhood. For us to go after, we don't have money to go after, you know, the developer and all that. And there's no real remedy, even though they didn't do, you know, they didn't do that. They didn't develop the land correctly for the water runoff. So we just have to bear in mind that, you know, with... Nobody's really watching how they're doing these things. And even though, and I can't remember the, there's like a, whatever the engineer, you know, that managed that, it was, I mean, no, there's no control over that, so we keep doing this and pe- you know, landowners or property owners are being stuck with problems that we, no one has the money to resolve.
So those plats, aren't those responsibility of our engineers to make sure those runoffs and everything is proper on there before they're approved?
Correct. Many of the ones that are ETJ right now because our subdivision ordinance applies to ETJ. Yes, that is what he's looking for. That's when he makes a recommendation for approval. What he's saying is he's gone through, he's looked at all of it, and he has said whether or not the plat conforms to your subdivision ordinance, and that's how he makes his recommendation.
So these neighborhoods, there are floods and not floods because we're not strict enough?
Well, they also, these are plat reviews. Usually plat doesn't have the actual development on there. As far as where the housing would be built, how the housing is situated.
The drainage.
Um, usually for the initial plats, there's no drainage report. That usually comes in with the development. And that's where you get a little, you can send an ETJ, what's your authority?
Yeah. That's what I'm trying to pinpoint, whose whose responsibility is the flooding? And then something that we approve, something that he suggests we approve, they go to the county and they review it and then...
I'm supposed to go to the county.
Think there's a issue with the elevation between us, our considerations, our four higher development plan and the county. The county is a little bit higher, you know? You got a rep right here. You got a, you got a rep right here.
County rep.
That's what I'm getting at. Oh, sorry.
He's not sending, he hasn't sent anything to the county this year, I don't think.
Is that true, ma'am? You want me to come and mickey it?
Yes, please.
I just wanna say I do like this, all this, you know, feedback and forth.
Yes.
Thank you. We appreciate it. I appreciate that.
Well, thank you for letting me here. Thank you for letting me speak to some of those things. Yes, the current interlocal agreement says that the city staff is supposed to send those to the county. We've been working towards getting those and those being made available. And I have received some. I've not received all. And some I have submitted comments back with concerns. Um, one specifically you have on your agenda today. And because it was on the agenda Tuesday night for a final plat, I had submitted comments back that I had concerns. I was told it was rejected. So when it was on the agenda for final plat approval, luckily I was able to visit with your applicants. And as of yesterday, this surveyor sent me what I needed to clear my comments. But you were about to approve a plat that I had comments on. That the surveyor confirmed the engineer never relayed those.
So the things that you had to change, we don't have the current information then to, to approve?
It won't affect the plat layout of the lots. But we wanted to make sure that there's an existing home with septic. Those septic lines have to meet setback requirements. You don't wanna sell the neighboring lot to someone and you go out with an excavator and cut off the septic lines because you don't want that on your property. And now the person living in the house has a problem. And so drainage concerns are something that I would send comments back about, yes. Which I have sent on the few plats that I've received. But if, if you have the authority as the city for your engineer to review the drainage, if it's not reviewed correctly, if inspections are not taking place, because if, if you're waiting for the home builder to do the drainage study, that's not how that works. They don't do that.
Well, that means business. They tried to cut all the curbs.
Well, if, if it's not in the plat process, then it's not done. Because drainage is not required to get a building permit or a development permit to build a home. Johnson County has some leverage for that. But if I'm not the engineer, or I'm not the one reviewing the plat, it, it's, it's the city's liability for those drainage issues the plat you have put.
Do you have another question that you have to go with?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Well, generally speaking, I'm an L, so. Do we have, have a reason?
No, we don't.
If we reject it, don't we have to have a reason for the rejection?
I don't want it. To lodge an objection, to ask for a hearing, then most likely in your petition and request for a hearing, you would want to outline why. But again, I haven't been involved in this project. I don't know if we can provide service or not. It's one of the things, you know, listed that they look into. That's where Glenn is gonna have all that background information. I think that there has been discussions on this to take up these property for months, going back and forth. But again, I wasn't partying to any of those.
And it expires until October, our chance to do anything about it.
Your ninety days expires, and I'm sorry, I think it's July fifth, because we received the date of April fifth. Why is this man still employed? I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm, no, I mean, let's, if, if that's really what we can do, Nicole, just say no, and then we'll look at...
I mean, that would be my recommendation. If, if the council does it from a political lens for several reasons, um, my recommendation would be go ahead, uh, lodge an injunction through your council action, and then if you need returning, they can start working on follow-up that petition for a hearing.
Alright, make motion to reject the petition for consent creation of a political subdivision in Johnson County Municipal District. Three. I'll second that.
So is reject the correct? Is reject the correct wording since we're responding to the petition?
Yes, because you're rejecting that petition.
I have a motion and a second to reject the petition for consent to the creation of a political subdivision in our ETJ for the proposed district in Johnson County Municipal District. Any further discussion?
Do we have any of the mudders? We have any of the mudders, Ron?
Nine, seven, two, ten, six, go on, or Belmon.
Dove Creek Ranch up on twenty-three thirty-one?
Yes, we have Dove Valley Ranch.
What's that about, Ron?
Ten, four, twenty-one.
One, the one, Southland, three thirty, on twenty-three thirty-one? They came in here to, I don't know.
There, there's one called Nolan Ranch. I can't find out where it is. They, I didn't find a lot of information on that.
There is, are any of those rejected and still brought in? I mean, is that, or were any of those rejected to?
I, I can't seem to, I, I don't.
Another one, my, in the last two years, they're rejected. As soon as my list comes up, the answer's always been, we, we wanna be good neighbors, so let's vote yes.
Oh, well, yeah.
Belmon Mud is the farthest one along. Dove Valley or Dove Ranch is right behind it. And the, they just have the bond election for, for Belmon.
So we'll have three that will become our...
If they're all proven, they go, yeah.
Oh, you'll have four.
Four. If this one, this one's four. I think Belmon's just for, and a lot of these are just for wastewater. They're not bringing in even any water because TCEQ's providing the water for a lot of these. They have water rights. This is for waste. So what they did is they take, they take a preliminary plat that has acre lots on it, that's septic. They read, the, the, the former council replatted these to under acre lots. Now there's no solution for waste. Now they need a solution for waste. God, we can't support the waste, so the muds come in to do the waste. That makes sense. This is just, Belmon's just for waste, I'm almost sure. Unless Johnson County's gonna pull out of providing the water for them, but they have the water providing rights ability to do that. If that makes sense. I, like I said, I was paying more to flush a toilet with muds than I was with water coming out of my house, because it's a money-making machine. You know, if they want, if the boardroom director wants to go down that road and make money. Doesn't have to be. It could be run like a municipality if they're responsible, if they care for their neighbors, if they wanna make money out of it, there's a lot of money to be made in muds.
Any further? No further discussion, stop.
I vote to reject, correct? Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously to reject petition for Johnson County Municipal District, three. I'm P. Recommended for, recommend for approval of final plat for lots one and two, block one, lots one and two, block two, Rock Hill Ranch, in addition to the city of Godley, in addition to the city of Godley, ETJ, Johnson County, Texas, being eleven point three seven nine acres of land located in the JW Spogol survey, hashtag number nine eight one, RH APR survey, hashtag number one zero two one, JL Neighbor Survey, hashtag number one one six seven, City of Godley, Johnson County, Texas.
Was this the one you had questions?
There was no fees.
And those have been addressed?
Yes, sir.
This one has no fees. Is this the no fees?
This is no fees.
Correct. We, we confirm that the fees have not actually been paid on this, so the shot clock has not started.
Oh.
Um, so it's not actually considered a final plat at this time, so our recommend...
Go ahead, Sarah.
Our recommendation would be to, uh, table this.
Why would it be on the agenda, just here out of curiosity, if it's, it seems like it's pointless for it to be here?
It was a carryover. It was, it had been removed, and then it was, whenever this agenda was, uh, was redrafted, it was a carryover. It was a declarative error.
Why was the original?
Uh, because the original time that it was drafted, it, we did not know that the fees not yet been paid.
I'll make the motion to table out a P, uh, because of the no fees.
Sir.
I have a motion and a second to table. Any further discussion?
Uh, so we need to table to a specific meeting.
Can we just, discussing, can we just say no? Not have to deal with it?
So do we keep hanging until they pay the fees, or we just deny it and then wait till they pay the fee and come back and work?
So remember we talked about, so the plat's the ministerial, uh, action. So you can't actually deny it because, uh, Glenn has actually looked at it. It does comply with all the ordinances, um, so you would have to approve it. The only hangup is the fees haven't been made, which would make it a final plat, which triggered your shot clock.
So just keep hanging until they decide to pay it?
They look sometime tonight? Next Monday? I like that.
How about the law?
That is an interesting question. Why don't we table till next day?
So since it's not a legit item, can you actually take that action? This agenda item isn't written correctly since we're not approving, uh, our final plat.
Says recommended work. It's final.
What is the final plat?
So again, our recommendation is to table it. Um, because the only thing missing is the actual fees. We need to see if these can be paid, at which time it comes back to your agenda. It will be a final plat for action.
Once, um, and just to finish that joke out, it really wasn't a joke. I liked the idea. It could be done, I guess. If this were legit and it was a final plat, or, um, if we decided, if we had the, uh, ability to table it and we choose when to bring it back up, the shot clock still runs, of course. So we can't table it till ten years from now.
Correct. I would be happy.
Would you like to say?
I'm not in full.
Mention it.
So maybe we can amend the, amend the motion to table specifically?
Get the vote.
Okay, so.
No, we need to amend the motion specifically.
I need to amend that. So they need to.
Look, we're not exactly scared for me.
He's got an amendment to table to the July eleventh.
I have an amendment on the floor, a second, but I have a second. Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. As proposed, passes. Now I have a motion and a second for that amendment on the floor, stop.
Aye.
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 Aye. It's been table till July eleventh. I'm P. Discussion and hostile action approving the steering committee for the city of Godley comprehensive plan as recommended, final say.
I'm going to be down till October eleventh.
It is fourteen thirty-eight, one forty-three, eight, will take a five minute recess to use the pressure.
Yeah. Did I do that? No reason at all.
Yeah.
So I'm P. Discussion and hostile action approving the steering committee for the city of Godley comprehensive plan as recommended, final say. I asked for to pick someone to be here to handle tables. And then we discuss the entities that we have to reach out to them, make sure we're still understood that, um, that someone comes to the table. If we wait till July eleventh, maybe there's somebody for, really one for the team.
I have citizens coming to me who are concerned.
I turned out those.
I have citizens who are coming to me concerned about the selection of the candidate, the steering committee. So. My question would be, since I'm a rookie and I don't know anything about, I did a little bit of research to see how these things work. Um, steering committee really is just nothing more than a group of people who seem to steer the vendor in the direction that they have determined to go under the input of citizens, in this case. What actual authority does a steering committee possess in terms of determining a final, uh, solution, for example, for our particular instance? For example, for the, for the office of municipal master. They don't have any authority to do that, right?
Again, this is a mosaic question, uh, I'm always speaking in general terms, but yeah, it's, it's for the city representatives that will advise mosaic, have power, they want to see the city go, and then they just give the recommendation to y'all. Y'all have the ultimate, uh, final decision makers on adopting any project.
Then once that plan is adopted, let's say it's adopted for twenty years out, we can still change it. It's maybe not recommended, this, that, and the other, but if we change our minds, or if another council down the road changes their minds, they don't want to see something in a particular area. It's not, it's a law. Is there an ordinance that's put into place once, there is one.
There is an ordinance, but ordinance is a willing reading document, so we can amend an ordinance.
So I'm just wondering, the steering committee, isn't it a little delayed in the process? I mean, I believe in the way, I wasn't here very far, I have a little, did she not say that we're getting, we're getting to the, near the end, and now we're just, now coming up the steering committee, the system? Coming with the plans developed, this, this is a kind of fair commission.
It's, so it was an advisory board here, the ultimate authority, but she stated the prior steering committee that was approved by council and submitted to mosaic was basically overrode by mosaic and the mayor.
That was the second issue that bothered me, why is mosaic overriding the council when we're paying them for service? Why did, and I understand it correctly if I'm wrong, but, uh, you were assigned certain duties, a certain contact, authority with mosaic, and that was just pretty much an order of rejection? Right?
Yes, it is. There are issues being for these students, mosaic didn't want that for liability reasons, which they easily didn't take out, because only financial student that was interested. Outside that, it should have been approved, it should have been had a meeting, but the mayor said that.
Why? Was there a reason behind it, did he have an explanation or was it saved?
He named the council president, mosaic told him that.
Why are we getting in a hurry for mosaic then?
Because the plan is taking in by the end of the year, and if we don't get a steering committee now, it's useless, and a steering committee is a major portion of this process.
What do you mean the plan?
Yeah, when we say plan, we'll end this year with them.
That's the timeline for the comprehensive plan to be done.
What if it goes after, then what if we just cancel it? Is that our contract, this is it?
Goes, goes, no, it just keeps going, but we want this, it helps us deny things, approve things, it's, look, the community wants.
No, and I agree, but I guess we'll, maybe we'll have them down in December, and maybe on the same page is, is, you know, the steering committee all comes together now and doesn't want the plan. Can they have it revamped and redone, the, what, if they see stuff that's not at the limit, it's not cohesive with our future planning?
Yes, that's, that's, they steer the plan, but they, they should have been doing that all along as we have these meetings, but they can, now that it's so delayed, they can come in and say, well, we don't like this, that, and that.
But, but, so I'm saying you still have that authority to work with the mosaic, even though they're at the end of this process, to still make changes?
I mean, they can make changes up until the day they present it, or else they will.
Yeah.
It basically, so long as time, five, you make decisions for every little thing in the city. I kept asking for committees, planning is only a mission, that way more input can be brought by community members. This gives that input back to the community, these are community members on this steering committee.
They are, but they're community members that can, you know, they're, they're not working because the meeting started at five, they did it at seven, that'd be a large swap. Just look at our council, you know, how many people began to attend after five, it's, it's just, you know, you can't, I can't do that all. I just wonder if we are, because this box appeared to be really adamant about choosing her preferred candidates and for various reasons, some of them couldn't, I mean, that didn't make sense to me, I just just wonder.
So we're all thinking that we're improving her picks, because that was just her advisory opinion, maybe not choosing a person on a list.
So we have no committee currently, we're just about, we're about to create, right? Forward, so people, some of the floors, we need to clear off and then start under this council, our advisory picks? I mean, how, that's a.
So we chose people that they never met, they never were even contacted. So basically, we're redoing it because it was a collective and shot down.
Well, yeah, it needs to be, I think, recommendation of this board, I think it's here. So what do you recommend?
Well, that's what I'm asking for y'all's picks, or I want y'all to choose somebody that you feel would be a good representative in this hall. And then, I notice we'll choose the entities that we would like. As well, connect these seven to nine, as well, whatever you want. People on the steering committee, it'll be two times at this point, for two days each, it'll be Tuesday, Wednesday afternoon. And then, like, two weeks later, it'll be Tuesday, Wednesday again. Believe that's all the meetings that the steering committee has worked besides presenting to us and then their analysis. Now we can dictate that to where they do more. I don't know exactly what the contract says about revisiting those meetings, or anything like that, and voting, just for monetary.
The other problem was, I didn't receive, I, I, as far as I knew, from the meeting that never was, we were going to do this on July eleven, and I got your email just a day before, I think, maybe last night, today, gotta pick your, your committee steering, I didn't even have, I couldn't ask because I didn't have enough, I didn't think I was going to need to. So I asked Jennifer, um, she agreed to today, but who, I mean, I would like to offer some, some, somebody because we're, we're going to pick. But I haven't had an opportunity to ask you.
So the email you got last night was just a reminder about this meeting and a couple of board points, that, hey, don't forget, these are going to be on agenda. We can table it, but if we table it till July, what are we looking at?
I already have a pick.
She said it was my eleven, people give her a list that day, everything would be good. How many did you, excuse me, I'm sorry. My shit. How many do we have, how many people are we supposedly picking, one, two, three?
So if we do it the same way we did last time, each council raises a pick, staff have a pick, um, we chose entities.
We're missing one, council number two, actually, so we may have to choose two from this, I guess.
So last time for entities, we chose the area engineer for Tech Scott, uh, the superintendent for WISD. I now have the correct address for the WISD Chamber of Commerce, that would represent all the businesses in town, David Hughes is a representative. The ESD, Emergency Service District, was Tom Foster, was the executive director. And JESU answered. And that would be the general manager.
What did he say?
That they were interested in him, but this was months ago. Uh, they're most likely still interested, if they're in the same position, I would just contact them again to make sure.
About the ESD?
Uh, still Tom Foster, so he was very adamant about getting a relationship going with the City of Godly again. For council, we each chose somebody. Obviously, who they choose again because it's a new council. And we chose four from the ETJ, two from south, two from north, and that was Trin, Massingle, Ricky Rowden, Julie Eastman, and Kayla Lane. And we can't do students, so. So if y'all would like to choose one, we can choose one or two from the ETJ, how we all want to do that. And choose our entities, and I'll get all of those entities to see who they want to put upon there.
I'm nominating, uh, Jennifer, she's agreed to it, she's got a business in town, pays sales tax, that's what Chris was after. Thank you, Jennifer, for agreeing. Julie, have you been going?
That's not it.
She's still working. I know she's up there, and we're going to be recording. I'm trying to pick her, do you want to know if she's connected, she's been coming up?
Yes.
Not picking is Julie Eastman.
I've got a couple that haven't confirmed that they live, whether they live for sure, and so, so I'll be ready, I'll, I'll be ready for that. But I do want you to contact the entities.
Well, luckily, I will do that for you.
You can take for me?
No, I will vet them, where they, make sure they live, and then Salem, and then the ETJ, whichever you pick.
Let me make sure, the one that showed up on the, on early, that's the, uh, Ketchikan, Ketchikan size?
They live in Salem.
I'm okay with them, I got them all like that. They haven't confirmed or, no, I haven't, they haven't confirmed yet if they want to do it, just, I didn't touch, I don't know what, we didn't have to do it yet.
So we have two from the south, two from the north, and, or what, does your, is there any other areas that we need to inform?
I mean, council is going to traditionally pick from the city, because that's, this city steering committee. Um, but we wanted to include the ETJ, but two from north, two from south, that, so we can regulate the ETJ and the, and that's one.
So your choice is still the same?
Yeah.
So would that be considered your personal pick or a city pick?
That would be mine, that'd be my personal pick, he lives in the city limits.
Does it, so we need two and one then for the city's?
Maybe that's. I would say one in ten people total, including the entities.
How many do we have there?
Right now, we have, I'm just counting six.
Are all of those up there going to serve, is that correct?
This is just, we chose the last time.
Yeah, no, it's just people we have, so I have that one, you have that one, and I have that one, so Roger should come up with one, the staff will come up with one, and then we have the, uh, Johnson County ISD, so they're interested in the ESD, then when you do, south, they will be north.
Who's picking the south, north, etc.?
We do.
We do.
Should we do that down?
I mean, I would like to get her a list of people, that way she can start contacting them, because they're going to have to set up meetings, but.
I was seeing the picture, um, on the north and south.
You said that Trin had, uh, said that he would do it, is that right?
Yes.
All right, that's good.
So, if I have another paper, that would be one. Uh-huh.
I'll volunteer.
Do we have a volunteer over here?
I'll volunteer.
We have another volunteer over here, Terry Greenlow.
Are you in the north or south here?
I'm in the city limits.
Okay, so let's, I'm going to rephrase this.
Yeah.
We can pick from the city limits, and then we will pick one or two from ETJ north, and ETJ south, and then we're going to choose our entities. That way, the majority is in the city limits. And then a couple from ETJ. And the entities are there because they have knowledge and effect, or we need to affect each other.
And I'm ETJ already, so I don't know how, like, if you pick me, I'm ETJ, so.
So for Julie, Julie, she would be picked for the ETJ. North.
Yeah.
She, Kayla, she's been going to meetings, and she, we got Kayla up there.
Kayla would be ETJ, north. Who y'all want for ETJ south?
That's good. You might.
That good, there it is.
Oh, oh, I hear.
It's a trend for ETJ south, we can do another one, we don't have to do another one.
I don't have another one. We just agreed to.
Star Ranch, here in the city limits.
So, let's move on to ETJ. Now, each council member, choose somebody from the city limits.
Thompson, Kevin Thompson.
Scott here, she's Thompson. And this meeting has someone in the city limits in mind. Roger, here we are still.
I've got one or two people that are being interested, but they haven't said yes to vote, or want to vote, I want to see her, the bags, the builder.
Now further, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Want to show up, get somebody? How many entities are going to want Tech Sun? So that would be the local engineer, most likely. So if you want to show up, choose, that'll be.
You'll take this one.
So where are the entities, let's see them.
We can already do the city limits?
That's right, you're choosing as your personal pick.
Oh.
So there's text to the council?
Still, uh, she, uh, she's pressed papers. She's in the city limits, correct? Ms. Stillow, you're in the city limits, correct?
That's right.
That's who you're choosing.
That's.
But it's your choice. So the entities, Tech Sun, the ISD, the ESD, and JESU, they're the primary ones that will be affected. We threw in the Johnson County Builders Association and the Chamber to represent development and business, you don't necessarily have to have them on there.
Well, we have.
Right now, we're looking at eleven, if we keep those two off.
We're already going to number, it's a business.
We've got two members of the school board. I don't go to nut talking, because it's always school boards.
I mean, they, I don't think they have the knowledge that Rich probably would as an administrator. So, we either get rid of this provision, or say no to the school board members.
So.
Or we keep them, that's up to council.
We'll have three school board representatives, there, Kayla, Terry, and Rich.
I'm representing a citizen of the city, not the school board, so.
Well, I get you, but, but, you know, you are a school board representative.
That's two, if, whenever I is, so we'll get that's.
Oh, okay, then they're version. So that would need three of them.
Well, two of them need to talk about, I say, like, they represent their town, or their north side of town, you know, represent the school in this. They represent their community in this, not the school, is what, I want you, Kayla. Oh, there she is. That's my correct, if y'all represent.
Correct, I'm representing.
You do not represent the city, the school.
Correct, correct, I'm representing the citizens.
Uh. That's my point, that, yeah. And really, even in the end, I mean, while, of course, you know, wanna make a careful pick. These individuals don't really, yeah, they don't vote, they don't have any authority to do, they just represent what people say has come up with for the citizens.
And I have attended every Zoom meeting as well, with Mosaic.
But you are paying Mosaic for their comments. So what they say, it doesn't mean something. No, I know, yeah, but in the end, even whatever Mosaic gives us, weeds out. So point one, two, we'll change it.
Well, what he's saying is that when it comes, when it all comes down to the colonization, then we'll, we'll say whether we feel like that those recommendations were good.
Yeah, we don't want mostly family over there, not okay? As much as we can do, given Austin, I mean, just three, it's low as hell.
So the ESD, you have ultimate authority to say yes or no, but you put committees in place because it's um, the law, of citizens, and it's not just us making the decisions for everything.
So do we have any spots open?
Not possible. I'll do it, you, whoever.
So do we want to do Tech Scott, ESD, JSA? And ISB?
Uh, I don't know why the ISB, I'm sure there's a logic, what is the logic about it?
We build off each other whenever it comes to development, maybe even over schools are going, we need to build a plan for things. They get permission from their people, we get permission from our people, so that involves sharing.
Yeah, but I mean, they have to plan best routes, they have to feature a plan for their stuff as well.
Yeah, let's do it, Mike.
I'm good with both. So all of this good, except for Roger, we need to have six people.
And get them all, make sure they're always be well so interested. And get like those entities to see their picks, and send that over to Chris, and never you get yours.
What's your?
That's not good.
So we're waiting to queue, since we haven't really approved an entire district of any table?
Table until July eleventh meeting?
I think most of the table, I have queue till July eleventh meeting.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to the table. I'm in queue till July eleventh meeting. Any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion to the table, pass it, and then we'll sleep. Item R, recommendation for approval of a final plat for lots one through eight, block one, block one, block three, block sixty-four, block four, Cornerstone Ridge, Phase One, being approximately twenty-three point eight zero nine plus or minus acres of the International Dairy Northern Railway Company Survey, abstract number one zero zero three, who will send that survey abstract number nine zero seven, the Thomas Topey Survey, abstract number eight four five, and the William Chair Survey, abstract number one three zero, located in the city of ETJ, Johnson County, Texas.
So this is over close to my, over your description time? All right, this is over near my mother's place, and what's next, it's across the street from her, uh, down, no, the twelve thirty two a little bit, but what's there are a lot of gas pipelines. So I'm curious if you know anything about engineering? About none of this, you know, running concrete over these pipelines? Really weird, oops, no, I don't know.
Okay, I don't, he, uh, after my exam, I'm crazy.
What about you, what do you think, you know? I don't mean to call you, you're old.
Jennifer, thank you.
Jennifer, thank you, I'm sorry, I have you.
Uh, when it's a plant that Johnson County is reviewing, and there are pipeline easements, gas lines, utility things of that nature, especially pipeline easements, we request that the developer or property owner is secure an encroachment agreement from whatever company it owns or operates those lines, because we've seen some companies that won't even allow you to place trash within those easements. And so this way, we ensure for the end property user, someone has already acknowledged as to what they will allow. Whether or not an agreement like that exists for this project, I do not know. As far as this project overall, at my last check, there was still not a signed ordinance adopting this property into the ETJ. So my comment remains the same as it was at the previous meeting. City of God does not have the authority to approve this plant. Unless something was signed by your council and filed with the folks office yesterday.
What say you?
So this came up a couple weeks back, Cora's over, and I believe there's several phases that are in this development, and if you recall, um, you know, she was here with the commissioner, and they made the same argument, and, you know, Glenn had explained, and I think y'all were able to confirm. Council did take action to annex this properly, the only thing missing is the actual ordinance, um, putting it in writing, um, which is on our to-do list to get done, um, and again, I'm happy to finish that, we'll pass it off to your new attorney. Um, but the only thing that matters as far as the law is concerned, is whether or not y'all have taken the action, which you have done. Um, so our advice is the same as it was a couple weeks ago, you have taken appropriate action, you can, uh, take action now.
What's the status on the shot clock?
Uh, so, I'm not sure when he receives this, let's see, I'll pull it up. Uh, this is also one of those needs to real actions, where if, uh, after review, it complies with all these ordinances, you have to approve it, doesn't matter, right? But I'll check the things for you.
Do you have anything more to add?
No, sir, what do you have a question? Thank you.
So, so you want us to pad it, if you raise your, what's her, um, arm, I?
According to my legal counsel, you do not have the authority without that power. But you're free to follow whatever your counsel recommends, and we'll see what happens.
So I still have an issue that we have in ordinance, but it's been approved, but we don't have it written. I'll have kind of an issue.
Yeah, it is, what was approved?
It's never actually been written.
How do we know that, Nicole? What was approved, it's never been written, we're in the notes, the data.
So again, my understanding is this was voted on, I think, in December?
Uh, I believe December sixth.
Okay, and so we need to be, you know?
December sixth, we should have those. We should have those with you, because we were reviewing those. No, no. Are you gonna? No, I don't.
Do you have those minutes included?
Minutes, you have the minutes, sir.
The minutes they will go to, uh, cover these?
No, no, I do not, because I will confide in notes, because there wasn't anyone to take minutes.
In December? Were they, they were there, weren't they?
Uh, no, I think that the city secretary resigned somewhere around that date. And that shot clock started on June twelfth.
Oh.
State House. Immediately.
So, let's suppose, what happens, in your view, if no ordinance? Um, so it's not in our ETJ, that's a sin.
It isn't.
It is, I mean, I'm sorry, it's, uh, did we, okay, help me understand, we wrote an ordinance to bring it into the ETJ? No.
You passed an ordinance, annexing it into your ETJ.
Anixing, okay, so, we can prove that. So, now we've got this problem, where we're gonna miss this data, wherever.
If we, if you don't have any minutes that confirm that that vote was taken, again, I mean, I'm operating off of your council members' assignment, their recognition. Um, if we don't have written confirmation of that, then no, why am I changing this? Um, it's not, you know, it's just scratching the ordinance.
Do you have anything with the minutes or anything, your documents?
There are minutes for not eating, and it goes to show ordinance number twelve dash zero six dash twenty twenty-two ETJ CRN. But our minutes don't include that actual ordinance, so I can't say it's just.
Did the agenda have the verbiage for them to go ordinance?
Yes, it is.
What is the agenda saying?
Discussion possible action to adopt ordinance number twelve dash zero six dash twenty twenty-two ETJ CRN. Accepting into the city of Galleys, extraterritorial jurisdiction parcel of land two hundred and fourteen point eight five one acres, private vision from Daniel Morgan, for his cornerstone.
So then, yes, there's sufficient information based on the agenda and action taken to confirm that you actually did annex it to the ETJ.
All right, so that's any questions answered, now, Mayor Cor Ten, what was your issue then?
The fact that we can't find that ordinance.
You wanna do it over, should we do it over?
You said it, it'll go on there, it's a due course to draft.
Well, yeah, you don't approve things that aren't written, so we're there, it's written, and we vote it in it. Or it's just lost now, and we don't have a copy.
In December, was Cassa attorney?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so he would have drawn that ordinance up.
He should have, whatever.
He should, yes.
Should we do it over, make it drive?
I don't know if we legally can, since it's already been approved. But we have not approved December sixth minutes. That I'm aware of, any council meeting.
And how many you have a minute, but we don't have any. Minute change.
Because I put everything on my table.
So, we got, this shot clock started on the twelfth, that's two days ago.
Uh, it started on June twelfth, so you have until July twelfth, which, like, if it's July eleventh, we have to.
Yes, July. Well, if we act, if for some reason, we can't prove that we put it in the ETJ, we don't have, that's very confusing for us at home. Have the, obviously, the developers already paid us the fees that they would not pay the county.
So this, I see my understanding.
Is it as simple as you just taking the verbiage and making that resolution?
Yes, if we can prove action was taken by council through minutes, the agenda, and the agenda language was enough, um, then yes, it's a memorializing issue, so I draft up an ordinance, that matches that verbiage, uh, and sign it, and file it with the county.
Or we can kick it back out, and let the county do the, do the plat, all right, give them their money back?
Uh, you mean basically just annex?
Well. Is it a dis annex in that case, since?
Yeah, but you're gonna hold a attorney, or, the city, the annex.
Oh, the law says that's, there's no evidence, other than, I mean, there's no ordinance, so, I'm not sure what the ramifications of that mean. If you're just saying it's just a write-up, okay, and Mike, then what would you, what's your argument against that?
Any sweat, I don't see.
Just her write-up, then the ordinance. Or, we have time, we could have toast, whatever.
The fact that we're writing up an ordinance, that where it's already been approved, who's to say it has the same language, the same anything?
And you would say?
I'd say this happens all the time. Now, is there a six to nine month gap? No. Is there a one to two day? Yes, that's much more, that's what I normally don't see.
So it's been voted on, it's been approved, the county's issue to draft an ordinance, then next?
I will say we had minutes, not reflective of anything past, so.
Well, that's the case, we're just gonna, it seems like we have two choices. Either, uh, let Nicole draft the ordinance, or do it over. What other choices? Because we've lost the, sort of, the original verbiage, so that's out, no more, don't have it. So either we do the ordinance over, I guess, or she drafts the ordinance, something, I don't think.
Right, I mean, I can memorialize what the vote was taken, to reflect the agenda and the minutes, um, if we go that route, if you still have concerns, if you don't think that we have active reflection of the action that's taken, then we go to the assumption that it wasn't properly taken, they weren't annexing, we don't have the authority.
So we did, we could have two, July, whatever, to draft.
If they don't have the authority, then there's no shot clock.
Correct.
Basically, she has a few that's been, uh, moved over to the, you know?
So, yeah, if you table it to July eleventh, we're still within that thirty days, that gives you time to figure out if this action was actually taken, you draft it, or does it get filed, then you can actually approve the plat in July eleventh. If it comes out the other side, then you're actually taking the property annex, you're looking at the agenda, because you can't make a decision. You don't have the authority that way.
And we give back their money, and they go to the county?
Correct. Basically, it's an unwinding.
Okay. They probably got a little over the top, maybe?
Do they, or?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Well, yeah, why, they're still at all those, if they love it, all those are the same lines, you're on the count. Then we let it go, or who's in the stack?
What do you wanna do, Mike? Are you there? Wait a minute. We can't approve it, right, because, well. We can't approve it without the ordinance. And then just write the ordinance, that's kind of backwards, but you're saying that works.
Yes, if we're all operating, in my vicinity, we're operating, that we have an agenda, we have many minutes to actively reflect that this was properly annexed, then yes, you can take action today on this item, uh, because it's just a matter of memorializing it via ordinance, which can be filed at any time. Or if you're gonna take a conservative approach, table it, let's figure out in the interim which way to wanna go, and then by the July eleventh meeting, you'll, you'll know whether or not you want to approve it, or, uh, you're going to kick it back, unwind it, and let it go through the county process.
So we've never, to my knowledge, approved December sixth, the eight minutes. I told Julie this will never revert at the high school. So we can't. So, we can't say that the meeting minutes are correct, because the council will never say yes or no. Unless y'all can find meeting minutes that show already approved, it is number six. And I just have a problem saying yes to something that may or may not exist, or.
You have a problem, Jayden?
When does the shop clock run out?
July twelfth.
Yes, yes, we, and we did. And if it runs out, and we, we don't have the ordinance, that just gets back to the county, or give them their money back, or whatever.
Yeah, then it'd be administratively approved, and that process is going to be seen by a judge as, you all just didn't do your job. And it's administratively approved, sorry about that.
So, do you have a copy of the minutes? Can we just approve minutes and live or?
Not today, it has to be of the agenda to be approved.
You mentioned something about the shop clock dropping off if we don't have the ordinance. Yes or no, did I miss that?
You can tell where your classes are.
Sorry.
Say that one more time.
You mentioned some, in some fashion, the shop clock can drop off, and then it just goes to the county, what was that again? In some, uh, scenario?
Uh, only he never has the authority to review the plat.
Okay.
So, I just pulled up my email from the packing materials for December sixth, and there is no ordinance in there. So, it was either handed to us last minute, or it doesn't exist.
We have to check that every, or not, or any of the others, so, I don't know, maybe a motion to table item R until July eleven meeting.
I have a motion to table that second. Motion, guys, for a lack of a second.
Well, Mark, what's, I have a question.
Over to discussion.
I'm not, I'm not sure if I could why I want to say this yet.
If we're tabling this till the eleventh, we're pushing it one day within the shop clock. So, right now, we have time to figure out solutions for, for, on now, instead of just staying, forget about it, we'll see the day before the shop clock. So, what can we do now to fix this?
We have some proof that the, we, when we come back, we either have it in our hands, that we either approved the CTJ, or we didn't. But the annexation, or we did not. Y'all have looked for that and cannot find it, correct?
So, they feel poor, can't find it, so they're not going to be able to provide that at our next meeting.
Okay, so if we take the minutes that you have, that have not been approved, we take her resolution from my ordinance, can we do, put all of that on the eleventh meeting, prove the minutes, prove the, the ordinance, and get everything done, and that over for that meeting?
Uh, yes, so you would only have to approve the minutes, once the minutes are approved, the ordinance has already been passed. Uh, so there's nothing, there's no separate agenda item, you would have to re-approve the ordinance that already been done.
And do we have to approve the final plat?
Yes.
So, those two items can be put on the eleventh, and that'll be done. And you have the minutes, so if you have them, we just give her a copy of them, and then that way they're only attended. To get to the rest of the council, right?
Yes, though we're still missing the ordinance.
She just said, she just wants to.
She's gonna write on it. She can't go back in time and write twelve six twenty twenty-two ETJ CRN. She, it would have to be a ordinance number for this year, correct?
No.
Because it was approved then.
It was approved then. This is literally just taking what you said orally and putting it in writing.
Well, if the minutes taken is from one of our employees that will take the minutes, so all the things that that stood up to their job.
Yeah, that's not how that worked in twenty twenty-two, there were multiple discrepancies on minutes, and they had incorrect meetings.
Okay, can you, you have a solution?
I mean, I don't know legally if we can revisit that, I mean. Just to not say that we don't approve it, but you know, we just need an ordinance in front of us to actually approve. But let's see, legal advocate, let's see, if we end up denying it, and they already started work. And it's on our ETJ, and they have to go by the county, not ours.
So, in a sense, this scenario is, it turns out, we never actually took action to annex them into the ETJ. We, we, again, it's a mysterious action, then you deny the plat, which you don't have the authority to do, because we're operating under the assumption that we have the the authority, but in reality, we don't. The thing is, the name have to go, probably go to the county, but we can probably sue. For clarification, because I mean, at that point, if we're developing a kind of a no man's land, it's like, are we in the ETJ, are we not? Are we supposed to go to the county, should we not go to the county? Are they approving the plat, are they not? Have we paid for the plat to be approved, and do the money's paid, is that going to be returned?
And, not just that, because they're developing under the premises of our regulations since December. And then we toss them back over to the county, and now we have problems.
Have they done these developments?
I don't know, let's go on to ask it. Haven't suggested.
They haven't knocked down that area yet, no, above that.
We're just trying to consider our needs here.
What I can suggest is, given the time gap, given that we don't have a proper recording of the minutes, since we don't have the minutes actually approved, then we can operate under the theory that no action was properly taken. That would be the conservative approach here. If that's the case, then we have no authority to actually decide this final plat, then we take no action on it. Clarify for the record why, um, and then we would just have to basically administratively return all the money that they paid to the plat and let them know that we never properly annexed them, and so they need to go to the county.
Can they re-plat our next station?
Yes.
Let's do that. What she said. I like it, it's easy, it gets it done, it seems logical.
Until the hell of a risk really is that. Because too, is he marketing his, is he marketing his?
It's gonna put him a month behind where he went before.
That is, he marketing his division as, uh, city services selling those plaid.
We can't provide city services after that, no. It's all going to be just getting water, so.
Yes, that's it, I mean, once we notify them of this situation, he can immediately ask to be re-annexed. And then you don't have to add to your next agenda, you will probably take a vote. We'll have appropriate meeting minutes, we'll have an ordinance drafted, and we'll do it correctly.
And Cat, will you be the one directing the news to them?
I'm sorry, what?
Will you be the one directing that news to them?
I guess you don't tell me to.
Um, so Flynn, I think he's had, he's the one to approve the plat. Um, so, I mean, he's had interaction with them, uh, so he would probably be the most appropriate party to do that, uh, and would you go counsel?
So, you would tell Flynn to tell me?
Thank you.
I wonder if Flynn's gonna bill us hundred and twenty dollars an hour, tell them? Two hundred and twenty is one thing. It costs more, say no. Oh, he's black right, two twenty.
That's right. All of these documents, you know, it's agenda, why is mine here?
Alright, so what are we gonna do with R? Take look then, is that your?
Yeah, you take no action, we just.
Take no action, alright.
Because we have no authority to approve.
I make a motion that we take no action on R because at this time, we don't have any clue whether we have the authority.
I have a motion for no action, we have no authority for this piece of property, by a second.
I'll say.
I have a motion and a second, in further discussion. No further discussion, Scott.
Yes.
Uh. Yes. Prove unanimously for no action.
We can't forgive this one, though, right, so. Keep looking, keep discussing, Mike.
Yes, sir. And, and I will, again, I know that legal count is about to change, but today, we're drafting a resolution, I will also send an email summarizing this, where I would copy both Flynn and Cat's same direction of what to do.
CC him. And they even are new council? Did you have contract information?
I don't, but it's, uh, I highly recommend that Flynn give it to me, so I can contact like, so that I can establish as soon as possible.
So, the two.
Item S, discussion and possible action on approval of renewal of health, dental, and vision benefits through Texas Health Benefits School.
One of the questions that I have on this. I'm not sure how this works. Is there, uh, I thought we may have the increase, is there shop, shop around, I mean, is it, or is this just through this organization? And, that.
I was not privy to this information until a couple of days ago.
I would almost feel at this point that it would almost be like to shop around to, you know, just because of the timeline and try and make this approved, with the, uh, city staff, without coverage.
When does this proposal to become effective? Nine one. So, she must be signed and received in Austin by seven one, for the new benefits and rates to be effective for nine. Right here in the last, whatever, page, the last page. It's fine print.
So, we're shop blocking the, this too?
What happens if we just don't, I mean, obviously, I guess the rates don't stay the same, and the coverage drops. Is that what we got here?
I believe that we probably would be in the same year.
So, when, this is the curiosity question here on this, um. What did you find? Like, did they talk, contact you, or how long have we had to, um?
Twenty fifth.
Okay, so, if, if this, just curiosity again, this letter came in May twenty-fifth, while we were presenting with this, it's still a month later. How many, when did you find this in? Did you just discover this, or is it something that has been sitting there waiting, or?
Basically, I've spoken to the mayor about it, and we're working on trying to get it to the council and, of all, just by.
So, this went directly to the mayor or the?
Actually, it was, uh, addressed to me, but it didn't go just to the city government.
If we find another vendor, let's say, suppose. It's possible to, and this isn't a contractor, is this a contract that we cannot then get out of? Is that right? Well, sometimes, for example, on your house insurance, for car insurance, even if you pay over a year, you get out of it, yeah, you get out, or it's fine, so you can really use your company money. You know anything about this, Nicole, about these types of issues?
I don't, that's just the, the council asks about.
Well, I don't know what option we have here, but then it was.
It would have announced to have a representative here speak on this, so, when do we, when is the window or cancels? It's on the first, yes. Do we have time to ask this representative to be as possibly, a special call meeting to speak on this?
This is insurance company, so.
Well, we have a representative. Maybe.
That's seven one is whenever they want it, our insurance doesn't actually expire until.
September.
Not in there.
Because I'm just thinking an increase of two hundred and fifty dollars per week, make you worth us asking the question?
Check out the last page, Mike, at the bottom, it says, then new re-rate notice will see, does not complete re-rate process, you will need to sign the member option of attorney or marketing contact by six twenty-two. Twenty-three, well, that happened? The six twenty-two, twenty-three? Last page, this does not complete the re-rate process, you will need to sign the member option of attorney or marketing contact by six twenty-two, twenty-three. Because I would say then new re-rate notice will be generated and mailed to you, the re-rate sheet must be signed and seen in Austin by seven one, twenty twenty-three. For the new benefits and rates to be effective for nine one, twenty-three. So, what happened on six twenty-two, did we know?
I was reading it.
We can find that out, probably.
We didn't read it.
So, does that mean our insurance canceled our benefit on twenty-two, because it's gonna be in Austin by seven one, so.
It doesn't cancel till the end, or they might stick this with some additional, this might be an offer, and if you don't take the offer, then they get stuck with even higher rates, because there's more on time.
Does it give a classic cover?
On June twenty-third. She said that, that Yana Lewis said that she's unavailable to join our council meeting tomorrow, to do this one. However, I'm more than happy to schedule a time with you and Kathleen to discuss your benefits and options in more depth. So, I think that's a hard debate, the seven ones, I mean, obviously, they want our money, so naturally, we'll take our money on seven two, seven three, or seven four.
Alright.
So, can we direct, council? Can we direct, and to be able to take care of that, that thing? Are we?
Yes, yeah, if you don't want to take action on this particular item, if they're not wanting to talk, we can do that, I would just table it and then just from the die, and let him know that you, that you desire to contact and get more information.
How could you not mean?
I, I don't care, but I don't want our city's insurance.
Yeah, you can give it to her, she's.
I mean, I would try to negotiate the rates, but.
You still don't want me? I'm maybe listening to you.
Um, well, the problem is, clearly, you have no date specific, so you don't know.
So, no action, and then, are you okay with my campaign?
Sure.
Roger, you okay with my campaign? There you go.
Yeah, my, my doesn't really.
Thank you, Mike.
Now, who can handle all of this stuff? You want help, we'll just follow.
I told him the same.
I imagine this will work for you.
So, motion for no action.
That's what Yana's doing, so.
It doesn't exist in our, so.
Motion for no action, we had no action, I don't want to do your option anyway. So, my motion that we take our time out of this.
That's still taking action, but, by a second.
And a motion, and a second for no action on S.
Almost four.
Any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott.
Hi.
Alright. Yes, it's made action with anonymous.
What time is it?
Almost four.
And I personally would like to thank everyone involved in coming, saving the lives here all day, for the long days, and, and, it was great, thank you, great, we appreciate all of it.
Thank you all.
So that's a very good, fifteen forty-nine, we're past.
Mind if, is there a motion for a turn?
It was good, it was.
I mean, the mayor did it here. I have a motion here, say.
Scott.